Could everyone take your seats, please?
Sorry. No, I wasn't being moved.
I thought you wanted to be notified.
No, I'm just...
Okay, I got four councilmen.
All right, I'm doing it, too.
Persons. I've got four, so I've got four.
Instead of lunch, I'm gonna have fudge.
Okay, we'll try to figure out how to write this stuff.
Okay.
Yay!
Oops.
Fudgy the whale.
Your microphones are live?
Is Chris still here?
We'll go ahead and bring the meeting back to order, please. And at this time, we're going to go ahead and we're done. Audrey, you've done with your ordinances, so we'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Who that guy? Good morning, or afternoon, I guess now. My name is John Spear, thirty-year resident of Benita Springs.
Good morning, Councilman Spear.
Former Councilman Spear.
You're always counsel.
Next...
Former deputy mayor.
I'll start with something. Next Wednesday, I celebrate my thirtieth anniversary of opening my law office here in Benita Springs.
Congratulations!
And my original office was immediately above Bill's head over there, so I spent three years in this building when it was still a bank branch without an elevator and managed to survive. So here I am, still on my feet after thirty years. I'm here to talk about the DRGR proposal, and I can, I could go on forever about it, because I was, twenty-five years ago, I was at the Lee County Commission when they first dreamed up the designation and promised it would be dealt with and all planned out within five years, and here we are twenty years later, still talking about it. I was on the LPA when we talked about it a lot and decided to punt, and I was here on the city council a year and a half ago and three and a half years ago both when we decided to punt. And the short and the simple is, here's a proposal here to hire a planner, to put together a plan, and then y'all would talk about it and deal with it and maybe pass some comp plan amendments. Bill will be able to give you the exact number, but upwards close to a million dollars has been spent on DRGR issues since the city's been in existence, and including up to Dandaleesi being paid to put together some really thoughtful ideas that we looked at a year and a half ago. I'd remind you of two things. Number one, this council decided a year and a half ago, on a five-two vote, to do nothing, to just let it go, to leave it the way it is. And the second point is, six out of the seven of you are still there, and the seat that right now is empty. Peter's probably on the cellphone. Peter's replaced me. Unless some of you have changed your mind from "let's do nothing" and not particularly open to exploring other alternatives, please do not waste any further taxpayer money hiring a planner or consultant. If you want to talk about it, if you want to figure out, if you want to develop a strategy, if you want to come up with some visions and some ideas, that's great, but please don't waste the taxpayers' money until four or five or six of you reach some sort of consensus about what, if anything, needs to be done to change what's out there in the DRGR. Otherwise, it's just, you're gonna do what you almost did just a few minutes ago, which is spend a whole heck of a lot of time doing things and then have the thing go down three, four, two, five, one, six, or oh-seven, or whatever, or however it ends up. So just give some thought to that. I think perhaps if after the first of the year you want to spend some time talking about it, that's fine, but don't waste the money until four or five or six of you can open up your minds to think that something needs to be done out there. I personally think it probably does, but I'm not up there anymore. So best of luck, have a Merry Christmas, guys, and I'm going back to work.
Hey, see you there. See you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Deb McLean with the Banana Peel, and I agree with John Spear one hundred percent. And it's not just the past few years, but since we became a city, we have been fighting a small special interest group of lobbyists who want to build in the DRGR. We have spent over twelve years, I guess, aggregately a million dollars. We don't need consultant creep. In fact, I have a question. How many consulting firms have been paid under the fifty thousand dollar cap recently to reopen this can of worms? The density ground reduction was to reduce residential or any development in that area. The name is a misnomer. It was meant to reduce development. We know it does not filter the water properly. If anything, we should be restoring it. The microphone is not working. Can you fix it? If anything, we should be restoring the DRGR to maintain our small-town feeling. If we continue to build and grow, we will go past the fifty thousand dollar person population and become a metropolitan area, and that will bring big-city problems. We will need big-city buses. These are things we don't want in Benita Springs. Thank you very much, and I want to stop all consultant creep. We have government-light policy here. We don't want to head into government-big.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time, please come forward?
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier. Why do people distrust government? I mean, that's a big, big question. Back in, what was it, eighty or a number of years ago, the people owned land out in East Benita could build one house to one acre of property, and then all of a sudden, politician in Tallahassee, or, well, you can't do that, you're doing too much of this, you're doing too much of that, we gotta change your mind. You're gonna take, instead of building one house on one acre, you can build one house on ten acres. We didn't steal your land, you still have ten percent of its value. There's this common good, or the Communist Party says you gotta do this. The whole situation stinks. I don't know exactly what the answer is. I think Benita Springs has a very small portion of the DRGR area in total. I think is one case we do have home rule. We'll fight it out, guys.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hello?
Good afternoon. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and I'm here to talk about nice stuff. I think we all need a smile on our face after this meeting this morning and recent tragic events that's happened. And with me, I think you all know, the glass is half-full, not half-empty. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Benita Springs Chamber of Commerce. They recently received a five-star rating from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and there's only seventy-seven chambers out of six thousand nine hundred and thirty-six, that's one percent that get that. I think that's great, so congratulations. Number two, Benita Springs and Estero are going to be profiled in January and February in this magazine, "Where to Retire?" Well, gee whiz, I wonder why. We're gonna, we're one of the top destinations, so there you go. And now, Holiday in the Park, what can I say? Wonderful, wonderful night. I'm glad we moved some of the things across the street, right? The banyan tree, beautiful. Everyone had a great time. When you see, your reward is the smiles on everyone, young, old, and in-between, so we're gonna do better and better with that. And I'd like to personally thank Laura and Patrick. You know, Laura stepped into Arlene's shoes, and she's doing her own job, too, and she's doing a great job. And also Nicole and her staff of Parks and Rec. Yeah, I know, they got paid. They got paid, but they're so easy to work with. And you look at those young women, attractive young women, and Patrick, I'm sorry, I can't include you in this, and don't be fooled by those good...
He's not sorry.
Don't be fooled by those good looks, because there's brains up there. There's brains up there. Okay, the boat parade. The date next year is December fourteenth, and please, city, Rotary, Chamber, everybody, put it on your calendars so that...
Historical society.
Excuse me?
Historical society.
Oh, yes, thank you, Peter. Put it on your calendar, because it's such a beautiful thing, and we want everyone to be able to enjoy it. And I'm happy to report that Adam says next year they're gonna go back to the old route and start at Big Hickory, which means all of you people who are living on Broadway Hoag and Carolins will be able to see it. They'll go up to Holly and come back and go back to the Fish House. And the Imperial River Conservancy had donated a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cash prize for a nonprofit, and nobody came. So better put your thinking caps on. And Mr. Nelson, I hope your barge and the dragon is back in town, because that's all everyone has said, is "where's the dragon, where's the dragon?" And finally, nature place, my heart's out there. The friends are doing well. I want you to know, we purchased a new queen, and she's obviously very happy, because when I was out there looking the other day, there are just all kinds of bees around there, and I think you all know, from your own beehive at home, when the queen's happy, everybody's happy.
And baby.
Mama's not happy, nobody's happy, right?
You betcha.
Okay, okay.
And let me tell you, our beekeeper, he's got the hives out there. He is producing honey, wonderful honey. He is just as pleased as can be. And of course, we have friends like Don Thompson, who helps us mow, and Cullum, who's always there, and Professor Green, who has, is using it out there as a, kind of a classroom. And they built steps over Mount Benita. You can now go over and walk all the way to the Keel Canal. And finally, we are counting the days until next month, when we have Jackie and Stan back there, and we can expand our hours, and Jackie has wonderful programs, and Stan treats it like it's his backyard. Thank you so much, and I hope I did put a smile on your face.
Thank you very much.
As usual.
I'm busy up here photobombing ourselves, right?
Yes, Alex Grant from, I was gonna say from Bugs Away. I've been killing bugs and rodents all over the place, so I'm sorry I'm running late. But anyway, on eleven-D, on the density reduction groundwater resource area, from my slight experience in the area, the soils there, the vast majority of the soils there are hydric in nature, and this means that a number of them have about a ten-foot depth of these hydric soils going down to the parent material, the rock base. So trying to ameliorate that area, and there are several thousand acres, couple thou... I don't know how many thousands of acres there are in that area, but trying to put, you know, put the soils in a situation where they will not contribute to flooding problems, which occurs from time to time because of the nature of the situation, since we are at the foot of this imperial watershed, which is at least three-hundred-twenty-five-square-mile area. We're talking a lot of money, I mean, a lot and a lot of money, to try to ameliorate the problem. So you really have to think of low-density in that area, because to try to redo that entire area, you're talking, be cheaper to send somebody to the moon. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the city attorney's report. Audrey, what do you got?
Thank you. The first one is very good news, to accept donation of land from Centex for the Shangri-La Road Extension. It's subject to some conditions, but the conditions are relative, well, one is for the city to take ownership of a portion of Rosemary Canal, with Public Works is okay with that, that we will initiate and process any development order or zoning necessary to handle this, and we will work with code enforcement to make sure that there's a little strip near Village Walk, same developer, but different project, so it's not related to this particular project, as to who has lot-mowing responsibility. So those were the only conditions. They've been wonderful stewards to the community and very appreciative, because it does help move the project faster, which we'll talk about later on in the agenda.
Counsel, you have a motion or a stop?
Question.
Oh, question, yes.
Was there, you hear a lot of things in town, is there any existing issues with the drainage that I hear right at Centex?
Any, go ahead.
That you know of, or have heard of?
Inside the development of Hawthorne, or what are...
There was.
There wa...was there?
Yeah, along, remember, along Shangri-La, Mayor, we had a lot of flooding over there a couple of years back.
Well, that's not in Centex.
That's not internal to that development, that's external.
Okay, so if I've posed the question and nobody in the room has heard that there's an issue, okay, fine, thank you.
There was. It's corrected.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, and there's a second. Motion and second, and any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackda.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Okay, authorized staff to enter into the big-dog agreement. Oh, hey.
Hello. Good afternoon, Arlene Hunter, Director of Development Services. You have before you a proposal that we have received from artist Dale Rogers to be able to bring the big-dog show to Benita Springs. There's a couple of items that we will be working with. We will be working with Laura Taylor to make sure that the display of the dogs, as you know, will be in the height of season and the events at Riverside Park and Lyles Hotel, so the display of the dogs will be, will be set so that we don't compromise any of the events going on. We'll also be working with Nicole on activity she has in other parks as well. We have the opportunity to bring fifteen dogs to the show. They would be bringing them in, in March, and they will be staying through April and possibly longer, depending on his schedule, at no extra charge to us. The Art and Public Places Board realizes that their budget is ten thousand dollars and is making a commitment to raising the additional two thousand required for the entire project, and at the end, we would receive an eight-foot dog sculpture.
Okay. Counsel, it's your pleasure. Janet?
How can you say no? And I just want to put this up so that the folks at home could see what we're talking about, and they also can look this up on the internet, the big dogs, under Dale Rogers, the artist. This is gonna be so much fun, just absolutely a great thing, gonna put Benita Springs on the map.
And the Art and Public Places Board...
So I'd love to make a motion that we approve this.
I'd love to second that.
Motion and second, any other discussion?
I...
Martha, since you made the second, you can go ahead, go first.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. This is awesome. This is great. I'm very excited about this. You did talk about Riverside Park, but Mr. Fulick, when he came up, did mention, I don't know if the, our city attorney made the suggestion, but to have it at the Benita River Park?
Correct. We're gonna, when the artist comes in January, he's actually coming for the show that the Art League has at the promenade. He will be here to walk the different sites with us, and we'll be able to determine which parks would be best for the, for the display. So it may be that we place the display in a multitude of parks, so there's more exposure.
Well, and that's interesting, because people would, you have to give them a little map, they have to go to the different parks, to see the different displays. It can be done very well in the landscape, you could be humorous. This is great.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Bill?
I think it's great, too, but are there any insurance liabilities?
We would be covering the art show whites here under the Florida League of Cities insurance that we currently have. There's also would be disclaimer as well within the city attorney's contract with them as well.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Pete?
I think it's wonderful, too, but we're talking about ten thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, correct?
Correct. It's in a light item you currently...
And no recapture. I mean, we're not gonna have a special exhibit or a special event, right?
We're getting a dog.
We...
We're getting a sculpture.
So we're basically pricing the dog at ten thousand. I just have a, I love the idea, but I'm gonna be voting no.
Okay, and I guess if you were looking for a recouping of the money, supposedly when you bring people downtown for the show, it brings people to retailers, it brings more, that's, that's the reason you do these things.
Interest, yeah.
So hopefully, there'll be some, some recoup from that. Anyway, okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackda.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
No.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Okay, Art, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do, and that is, I'm sorry, I wanted to bring it up during the public hearings. We went through some of the changes the local planning agency made. They did provide direction on color palette, they did provide some changes, recommendations that you'll see in the next draft, but they also wanted city council to defer advertising the ordinance so they could discuss color palette longer. We are ready to advertise for January sixteenth, so I want to make sure I'm on all fours, or the city clerk is on all fours, in advertising as opposed to deferring it.
On all fours? I thought that was the last one.
Yes, Janet.
I think we spent an awful long time ourselves on that one, and I really am not interested in, I appreciate the LPA's thought process, and I appreciate everything that they do, but I think this is one where we have already kind of made our, our decisions on.
Mayor?
That's what I think.
I would agree as well. Go ahead.
I would disagree with that, because I don't think we spent any time, we saw one color palette. We didn't see these other color palettes that are available, and if you look at that online, at sherwinwilliams.com, southern shore, beaches, shores and beaches, beaches and shores, there's a lot of brown in there. There's no bright pastels, which is what you think of cheerful, happy, southern, you know, sunny Florida. And there are more for a northern colder southern beach, like maybe Georgia, but not Florida. So I'd love to see, I'd love to see them confer on that and hear what they have to say.
No.
Audrey, explain the, the time, timing process on this. You've got the first reading, right now, first reading is scheduled when?
For January sixteenth, and we have no other council meetings before then.
January sixteenth. When is the next LPA meeting?
January tenth.
January tenth, so they will be meeting before the January sixteenth meeting, which will not interfere, and if they decide, if they come up with a color palette or another color at that meeting, it can be presented to us at the January sixteenth meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I don't see any reason to forestall that.
Yes, and I also want to point out that the language that they also suggested to alleviate Councilmember Simons' concerns was that any other change in palette colors, now, the reviewer can make some changes in the colors, but because we don't want him to be arbitrary and capricious, he's very limited, so we have it that any other change in palette colors may be approved, and I put by city council, but it could be somebody else if you want to delegate that authority, on a case-by-case basis. So there is a relief valve. If you can't follow the twenty-four colors or twenty-six colors in the color palette, there's another mechanism out there.
Okay. All right, that's gonna be one of their recommendations.
That's an LPA recommendation.
Okay. All right, so, but right now, as it stands, counsel, do you want to go ahead and leave it for the sixteenth and then let, let the LPA do their business on the tenth? If they make a recommendation, it'll be included in that sixteenth agenda? Do you want to leave it like that?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay, so be it. Go ahead. What's your next thing? You got anything else?
That's it. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and...
Yep, same to you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. City Manager, we are up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to call up Lisa Pace to talk about item A, A and C fees.
Yes. For the record, Lisa Pace, Finance Director with the City of Benita Springs. What you have before you...
I'm sorry, could you speak louder?
Sorry. What you have before you is a resolution authorizing transfers of aid and new construction fees into a pool, an economic development pool. It's outlined in your green sheet for you, but basically what A and C fees are, they are, they are assessed by Benita Springs Utilities, and they are, work similar to the way our impact fees work. They are meant to assist BSU in defraying and offsetting the cost of connecting to the water, the water and sewer plants and pipelines, all the facilities that they need in order to provide that service. This pool, you would actually, with this resolution, you would actually be moving the A and C credits from the various, look, vacant properties that are listed and placing them into the economic development pool. What this, the benefit this will provide to the city, an immediate benefit, is it would eliminate the need for the monthly ongoing fees that are approximately forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. This is great annually, excuse me, thank you.
So this is what we've been talking about doing?
Yes, sir. In fact, y'all approved the ordinance, the change to the ordinance that with the franchise, BSU, before BSU, we were restricted by our franchise agreement, only to do it for affordable housing, and we utilized it in the period of time when we really needed affordable housing in the area. We were able to utilize those credit pools.
So all you're doing is asking us to allow you to put it in a separate account?
Yes, sir, exactly.
That's what you're asking?
Yes, and the way you will move it out of it, it will be moved out of it, it's outlined in the new franchise agreement, it will be moved out of there only by approval of a resolution by you all, by city council, and the designation of a project as economic development. And then also, we did want to let you know that the, the economic pool will be available for your approval. The A and C value that we're asking you to put in today is six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Count? Yes?
Just real quick, if you look at the back of the green sheet, the resolution references it, but I need you to sign, the mayor to sign the letter of agreement, which is the consent, the Board of County Commissioners won't approve theirs until we give them a signed copy. So I need you to sign that right away, so I can get that to them.
Yes, and...
Counsel? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will not be implemented, or we will not see the, the monthly fee reduction until the county approves it, we approve it, BSU approves it, and then we can actually submit it to them and get the monthly fee reduction that we're speaking of.
Okay, good. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I think it's a great idea, but I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If, can we save, we want to put this into the economic development pool, okay, but we're saving forty-five thousand dollars a year by doing that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would we, if we put it into another pool, for instance, the library pool, I don't know if we need to do that, but if we're gonna be building a new, or whatever we're gonna do...
You're not allowed to use it for that.
We're not allowed to use it for government purposes.
No, economic development is what they're, what the agreement with Benita Springs Utilities for.
Yes.
So then, if we held back the amount, like maybe a hundred thousand dollars or something like that, and we use the remainder for, you know, what is it, five sixty-four or something, in economic development? I don't know, anybody's here, Mary's here, I don't know, because we've already gone through this process, I don't want to hold it up, but I'm just thinking if we could...
Carl, go ahead and explain the agreement, please.
Well, what we're, what we're actually doing is something like that already on Mayhood, where we know we're not gonna be able to use that property for economic development purposes. Counsel has designated that as a park. We'll be going forward with several improvements in that, in that area. So we are going to continue to pay a certain amount of money monthly, because we're not gonna be able to use credits on that, because it's not economic development's park. So we'll continue to pay a little bit of money every month to reserve the capacity for that particular use, or those uses. So, you know, it really, I don't, I don't know if we could go to, to a library-type thing or not. It really depends on what type, what property we would want to put that on.
Yeah, well, that's right. So if we, we kept a pool for ourselves so that we didn't, I mean, I don't know if we would have to go to another agreement with BSU, since they're so friendly, we have a franchise agreement in the city with them, I just don't want to lose an opportunity to have a little something left here for the city.
Right. Well, it would take, starting the process over and a negotiating...
We have an agreement with Benita Springs Utility now, and your question is, what you're asking is to transfer the money into an actual account?
Yes, sir. An economic development credit pool.
And create, create a pool of credits that can be used for economic development.
It's a pool of credits.
A pool of credits that are worth six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
You could amend that agreement, though, in the future, if you found like the library or something like that, right? BSU might be, we could amend that.
Ben, that would, excuse me...
Anything is amendable or changeable or cancelable.
That was the agreement that BSU has made with the city, correct?
Yes.
That's...
Well, with, it's gotta be, the county gets involved, too, because it's a...
Yeah, I understand that, but it, that's, we've already made the decision to do it that way.
Yes, yes. That was one of the contingencies. Okay? Is there a motion to do so?
So move, second.
In a second, motion in a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay, what else you got, Carl?
Items B and C are the monthly financial report and projects report, respectively. If you have any questions, we stand ready for those, otherwise we'll move on. Questions? Okay, moving on. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say that the financial condition of the city is, as you can see from the document, improving dramatically on all points, and we should have a very successful year coming up in all ways, and of course, that's, that's good for everybody, thank you.
Okay, go.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, 2013, council member, I've already told Jane Swanson, my executive assistant, that 2013's likely to be an e-ticket ride, so hang on, so it's, it's gonna be good stuff for the city. Item D has to do with the northeast section of Benita Springs. And I know that this has been a controversial issue in the past, but I, but I think, for several reasons, it deserves bringing it back again for, for your consideration. Diane, if you'll bring that up. As the council is aware, the northeast part of Benita Springs, otherwise known as the DRGR, which of course, as we've already heard, is just a small portion of the DRGR, has been a topic of conversation for a number of years. Simply put, the question was whether it was made sense to allow additional residential construction density in an area that is supposed to function as a recharge and water quality improvement area. The latest of these discussions took place in 2010, where the council chose not to proceed with an application for a comprehensive plan amendment to allow additional density in the area. And just to make sure that the whole council and everybody watching understands what area we're looking at, I'm gonna go and point it out on the map, and then we're gonna have, we're gonna show you a second map to give you a blown-up view of it, and then I'm gonna come back.
Like a pointer?
Should have a pointer, yeah, that's alright. I'll take a pointer, I'm gonna take her pen, that's gonna be my pointer. Alright, so we're talking this area, right here. All within the bounds of the city, okay, Diane, can you do the next slide? Alright. And this is the blown-up version.
Do you want a mic, Carl?
Right here.
That's it?
That's it. That's my whole presentation. You wish, you wish. As Alex mentioned earlier, there are thousands and thousands of acres in this particular area, and the area we're talking about is inside the city, as we've simply put it earlier today. It's inside, we're only talking within the corporate boundaries of the city. It is east of 75, north of a, of a line, basically, if you were to draw Shangri-La, kind of straight eastward, you know, that would be the southern boundary, and then, of course, the eastern boundary of, of the city's corporate limits. The argument's been made that we should rely on science to properly address the issues of environment in this particular area. And yet, the science I have seen indicates that the area is impaired, and is not capable of cleansing the water as we would hope it would. I submit, however, that whether the area is impaired and not doing the job we hope it would, or if the area is providing the cleansing it should and needs to be protected, restoration or protection will take resources, as Mr. Grant indicated, but the city does not possess those resources to do that. Given all this, what is different now than in 2010, when the council last visited the issue? And I'd like to suggest several things. First, we have a recovering economy now. That was not the case in 2010, where there was still significant uncertainty in both the residential and commercial markets. The new residential developments in Benita Springs today demonstrate that we have certainly turned the corner in the residential new construction market. Second, developers now have an interest in the northeast section of our city, and are asking for negotiated development agreements, including increased density opportunities. Third, economic development. While new residential construction, and this is my personal belief, that new residential construction in and of itself is not economic development, it can certainly be said that it is an economic driver. Increased rooftops will bring additional commercial interest. And fourth, the private sector can improve the environmental impairments in the area. So where we have a lack of resources to address needs in the area, thoughtful, responsible, and planned development in the area might be an opportunity to be considered. The question is, what is the vision or the master plan for the area, and what would be expected of those developers should they decide to try to develop within that area? The thing is, we can't answer that question today, or those questions today. In order to properly enhance and protect the environment in the area, including sheet flow volume, water quality, and appropriate recharge, as well as address important infrastructure needs, especially transportation, it is important that a master plan of the area be developed. This would allow the city to be proactive in appropriate planning, thus positioning itself to properly articulate to developers the needs and vision of the area, and how the developers would be able to participate in solutions in a proportional way. For example, if additional water treatment was required above and beyond what the Water Management District would ask, the addition, we would be able to communicate those with the developers upfront, allowing them to weigh the additional costs into their business models. On the other hand, without a plan, the city is forced into a reactionary mode as we attempt to respond to each individual developer's request as it is received by the city, not sure if what is being negotiated will help us improve the area adequately or not. It is clear that a lot of planning has already been done in the area. Several speakers have already talked about that today, and I am not asking that we start over. And oh, by the way, we have not spent any consultant dollars getting to this point for this meeting today. However, because of the timing and the reasons that I've already talked about previously, I'm asking the mayor and council to authorize staff to retain a planner, to review the planning work already completed, number one, to update it as necessary, with an eye towards producing a final, wide-ranging plan for the northeast area of our city. If the council approves of the results of this work, we would ask council to authorize the preparation of an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So again, why now? What's different from 2010? We think we've got a recovering economy, we've got developer interest, we can supplement our economic development efforts, and finally, we have an opportunity not to just protect the environment, but to improve the situation that exists today in that area, in a planned and thoughtful manner. I will also say, in closing, that like Mr. Spear indicated, if the council really does not have the appetite to proceed forward with this, with any type of change in the comprehensive plan for this area, for whatever reasons, actually, staff would like to know that sooner than later, because we can move on to other projects, obviously, that the council wants us to work on. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, with that, I stand ready for questions.
Okay, and just, you know, as an addendum to what you said there, even if we decide not to do anything, right now, as far as the city's concerned, the applicants will?
They will, in fact, we've got, we've got one in the door right now, we're negotiating a developer's agreement with, and of course, I'm a little uncomfortable in trying to figure out exactly whether that's going to be adequate or not for what might be needed up there. We've got another one knocking on the door, and of course, the potential for more up there. So, the pressure from the development community, the interest, not pressure, it's not political pressure, I just want to be clear, the interest from the development community is there, and it's there today because they see what's going on in the market.
Okay, good. Okay, council, anybody want to, want to start, kick the ball off, alright, no? Okay, Janet, you go first, go ahead.
I've been here, I was one of the ones that John Spear was talking about, obviously, I've been through this process of the studies that have come before, and the ideas and plans for the DRGR area within the city boundaries, and I'm willing, at this point, to entertain some type of moving forward, because we have learned, it is my time on council, I have learned that it's better to have a plan in place than not to, and how to deal with something upfront. And I just have to say that, for me, the environment comes first, absolutely, and we need to have that plan as to how to address that. What I learned from our previous studies was, at that time, was that the restoration of the historical floorways was number one, it seemed to come up constantly and always in any of those studies. At the time, even a year and a half ago, the water quality issues weren't as big of a deal as they are now, because we've been mandated that we're responsible for that on a local level, and we didn't, that pressure really wasn't on us at that time when we were doing this, and now it is. So, the water quality issues move up on my list of what's important to get answers, and how we're gonna address those. And what we did come out of that, out of what I've heard from those studies and from what people, is the preserving of as much green space as possible within these developments, whether it be the clustering of the homes or the larger home sites, but we need to be cognizant on that, this isn't a place that we just want to put thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of homes, just because it's there. This needs to be carefully thought out and figured out how we can do that. And then, already, what comes with that, then, is the impacts that these new developments would have on our already existing residential areas, that has to be addressed. And that comes down to, you said, transportation, that's the roadways, the sidewalks, the buffering, and all of those things, we need to have a plan. So, I'm willing to go there.
Stan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I agree with what Janet has to say, and my question to you, Carl, is the, would you say, in your opinion, that there is strong interest to develop in the DRGR?
Absolutely, without a doubt, sir.
Second question, of the cost of a planner, what do we, you got any estimates?
Not right now, what I did in your green sheet was I put what I had left in a particular line item that we have in a budget, and that's $64,000 we have left right now. I would, I don't know what kind of money I'd be looking at here, we really, I wanted to get here to gauge interest from, interest and direction from the council, and then we'll put together a scope of work for a planner to do something, and then, you know, we'll know what that number's gonna be.
And finally, very well written.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Pete?
Janet, I want to pay you the ultimate compliment, I mean, you basically laid that out just about to a T, my thoughts, so I think that was very well said, I won't rehash that, and I guess, when you, when you look at, when you look at this, or when I look at this, and I think we, as a city, look at this, the ultimate question is, is that water flow, and that water, I know, we all know, there again, master of the obvious, without that plan appropriate, without the homes that are gonna be built, without the roads and the infrastructure, knowing, I mean, as much as we can predict Mother Nature, I mean, that has to be, in my mind, the first point, otherwise, there's no sense in going beyond that. And have a plan with that, a concrete plan, that, you know, the 10-year flood, the 20-year flood, the 100-year flood, beyond that, there's no sense to move, in my mind. But with that in place, and once we're comfortable with that, I, in my mind, it makes every sense to move forward and have a plan.
Alright, thank you, Pete, Martha?
Yeah, there is a plan in place, it's called the DRGR, and that was a plan that was put in place in 1989, which has been subjected to DCA scrutiny, and has been subjected to lawsuits and stood up on its, its own. But, with that being said, and, and if you have pressure from somebody and you have a plan in place, the answer is no. So, there, there are certain things that do need to be done about water restoration, and if we move forward with this, there are certain things that I'd like to see, as Janet pointed out, you know, a green zone definitely south of East Terry Street, down to the river, and to our buffer on the other side, where we zone the commercial interchange. Traffic counts are restricted, we have to figure that one out, and road quarters are also limited. What we can do, because there, not only is there a need for, you know, if you look for an aerial map, you can see that the water is disturbed, that, you know, it's basically been kind of burned around. Greg Rawls' study on our hydrology, I don't know if you read that, it's pretty long, and the Lee County topo study, which talked about the flows and what capacity, that's when the I-75 culverts came up, South Florida Water Management's recommendations around Spring Creek, this is an excellent opportunity to work through that Conservation 2020 property, rehydrate Spring Creek, it can take some more capacity, that's something that we can do, if we're concerned about what's gonna happen with drainage up there, we can both restore and protect at the same time. The Eastern Conservation Edmits, our Habitat and Panther, Habitat, Panther? Panther, bear, Habitat, thank you. And I'd certainly like to see, whatever we do out there clustered, I don't know how we're gonna cluster it, except, if we're increasing density, that's where the cluster is. The problem is that you've got separate landowners, and you can't just kind of scoop them all up, you know, all these little plotted lots that are out there, you can't kind of scoop them all up and then put them over here, because those are under separate ownership. So we're gonna deal with traffic density that, I'm not quite sure how we're gonna deal with that. But I'm interested, actually, I don't mind getting a planner, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think if we're gonna rewrite the plan, you need to have somebody who knows how to plan. So, my suggestion would be to hire Bill Spakowski, who's already working with Astaro. If we're gonna hire a planner, have somebody who wrote the DC, the rule for DCA, who understands urban design, who could probably approach us in a way, looking at Mr. DeLuce's plans and say, you know, neighborhood nodes, there are things that we can do, he's very environmentally conscious, if that's our number one concern. You know, that, that would be my man, if I were gonna do this, and I think you would have less objection, not that they've been weakened a lot, DCA, but less objection coming from maybe the environmentalists, if you had Bill Spakowski as well.
Carl, you looking to do this as, as an RFP, or, or a request for, request for, you know, qualifications, RFQ, whatever?
I've had some initial thoughts about that, sir, but I'm completely open to what, whatever, whatever's gonna be best interest of the city.
Okay, I mean, I think we're gonna have to depend on you to do some vetting there, Bill?
Right.
Thank you, Ben. Martha mentioned Greg Rawls, I believe you, I think I, I had a large, a large accumulation of paper.
Councilmember's cleaning out his house.
And Matt, we know. And I share, I gave them to Carl, I don't know how many pages you went through, but Greg Rawls was one of the first ones at the bottom. And having been there and done all that, and the water is, is, is the, really, the thing that must be done first, and I, and I don't know, and I'm far from knowledgeable about those things, but however, having lived here for 20 years, and living on the south side of the circumstances, on the south of Benita Beach Road, and having been through 1995, and having been through many storms, not as long as perhaps the mayor and a couple others, maybe, but I experienced the, the rain, and of course, the Manic Christian, which is directly across from, from where I live in Worthington Country Club, the people had to be moved out of there, that's an, that portion is an unincorporated Lee County. So obviously, there is a water consideration, filtered or unfiltered, but major, 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 and whoever you hire, and if you're thinking about hiring somebody that's already been there, with all those names, I don't, Greg Rawls comes to mind, and of course, the other fellow that Martha mentioned,
Spakowski.
Was mentioned. And then, and then, if you can get by the water issue, the road structures that would be required, Benita Grande, owned by the county, Terry Street, owned by us, I-75 widening, I mean, there's so many, they're the two major things that regardless of the developers would have to deal with, and we have to deal with, and the cost of all those things. So, I'm very reluctant to suggest another consultant, because I've been consulted so much in all the years. I think the knowledge that was given to us in the past could be, should be used in terms of their recommendations, and also this is, this can, which is going to change our community completely. And by the way, I think it's all in District 6 now.
I think so.
No, some in District 1.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I, we're, it's pretty much in District 6.
Well, we can, we can do that, we can do that for you if you want.
Here you go. This part's in District 1.
It's gotta wait 10 years.
Yeah, a big part of it.
The mine, the Stoneburger property in Citrus Park.
Are in your, are in your district?
Yep.
Well, I thought, okay, I thought the new, okay, fine, that's, that's even, you know, but, but the point is, regardless of whose district it is in, their major, I mean, the inadequate, the road structures that we have now, and interesting, just recently, and I believe Ben and Audrey have had this, you got a request about possibly an MSTU to make the Benita Beach Road more attractive by perhaps starting something along those lines, and landscaping and so forth, in our area? Which I know, it's, it's not part of the, but it is, because the people that on the, on the south side of Benita Beach Road are concerned about how things look.
Somebody might have one plan, but I haven't seen it yet.
No, 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 I'm suggesting, there was an email that came in, I have a copy of it. So, but anyway, that's positive. The point is, is that I really think we want to go, if we're gonna do this, I'm not, I'm not convinced that it, that it's, it's, will make the city better by just increasing density, thank you.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes?
I spoke with Carl and John and Matt this morning on the topic, and, you know, I have confidence in these folks, they're gonna manage to their budget, if that's money they believe is well-spent, and we've agreed that they should spend the money in the way that's best for the city, that's fine. I happen to think we're, we're raising expectations, if we put a... I happen to think we're, we're raising expectations, if we put a, a plan together like this, last vote was five to two not to do anything, I don't see much change on council, maybe there is, but this, these are my concerns. Environmentally, it isn't pristine, there's no question, it's not a pristine area, but it's Mother Nature, and while we think that we're gonna do something better with it, every time the government's got involved in trying to fix the Everglades, we have done it worse than it was, not that we can't do it better now, that's, that's, that's fine. Natural resource wise, I hear people saying, well, it doesn't recharge, you know, two inches a year, we have 4,200 acres in the city limits, it recharges, and yes, I did the math, 126 million gallons of drinking water a year, that's not taken out of the aquifers, that's put back into the aquifers, recharged, I, I don't want to damage that without knowing exactly what we're doing, and the city manager sent out an, an email with the DeLisi project on it, but, you know, there's the, the Mismar, the Mismar hearings, you've got the Greg Rawls study, we've got the LaRue studies, and frankly, Charlie Strater's been good in making sure that we keep intact with other studies that are going on, and the science is mixed, you know, I, I don't think you can say one way or the other. Finally, the infrastructure, as we've all talked about, I'm looking at a, I'm looking at a 2008 traffic study, that was done around the DRGR, and here's, here's one of the conclusions. A proposal for 4,820 dwelling units, and an additional 43,000 square feet of commercial property by 2030, we, we can't do it, there's, I don't think there's a possible way you can get that many people in and out of Benita Grande and Terry. We gotta have a plan, I agree, but I don't, I don't know if there's any real taste on, on the council, a big taste right now to, to give, give a heads up, to say, yeah, we're gonna be, gonna be willing to develop that area, and if I'm wrong, please, and I'll say it second time, last time, if that's the best way to use the money, you got my okay to do it, I'm just not convinced that we're not raising people's expectations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Just a couple of things, and whatever council you say to do, that's fine, but I, I want you to take a look at that area just for one second, and people talk about the DRGR, and what a great designation it was, what you see right there, that is what you reap, that's reaping the benefits of the designation of DRGR, that's what did that, Mother Nature did not do that, did not do those lakes, did not turn everything that you see on there into farm fields, abandoned farm fields at that, that's what the DRGR designation did to that property, you will be hard pressed to find something on there, but, except for a few small places that is, what you might even, even call natural, a few little areas there, so, I, I think that really, what this is, is that this is, you know, really damage control, we're not gonna be able to fix it, so, your, your options are to leave it like that, and, and you know what you're gonna have, that, that's legacy, that's, is that what you want your city to look like? Look, I mean, you look at that picture, and it's, it's a wreck, I mean, it really is, and, forgive me for the people, some of the people who live out there, it's, I mean, when you've been on a tour before, it's a wreck out there, and the only way it's gonna get finished is with people with money, that, that's what's gonna fix it, is money, we don't have the money to do it, we don't have the wherewithal to do it, and nor should we be expected to do it, so, I think that the, the best way to do this is you've got all the information in the world, as Bill knows, as everybody knows, we've got, you don't need any more information, all you need to do is to have somebody put together and say, look, if, if something else here happens, they need to do this, 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 and this, we need a guideline so that we're not making it up, for everybody who comes out there that wants to do something, so they don't have to kind of dream up something or guess, go ahead and write your own ticket, and, and it can be as, as conservative a ticket, it can have a maximum number of units, it can, anything that you, you come up with is better than what's out there right now, I guarantee you, because what's gonna happen is that, you know, it, it's just gonna be less and less desirable out there, in my mind, so, I, I'm for allowing, taking this, I'll call it a last shot at this right here, but what I don't want to do, what I want to see happen, is when this comes back in here, council needs to be ready to communicate, to compromise, and to go ahead and, and do something, and to do something that will allow this to get better, and not stay fallow like it is right now, because it's, it's doing no one any good, and you're gonna end up with abandoned mines out there, abandoned farm fields, and, and things that we can't enforce, so, and the water's going through there right now, the water floods through there right now, and when the rainy season comes, and the water gets to a certain height, it's gonna go where it's gonna go, we can, we can help that out too, we can require flow waste, we can do it all, so, that's my opinion on it, I'd like to see a motion to allow Carl or staff to come back with a, an outline for what, what they expect that consultant to do, and in the end, if the consultant comes back and says, look, transportation wise, you can, you can only hope to sustain how many ever thousand units, that's what it's gonna have to be, and then, and then that's gonna be up to council to figure it out from there, but, anyway, do you require anything else?
Well, I just, I want to clarify the motion, or the motion you're looking for, so, you're wanting us to put together a scope of work and bring it back before we hire the consultant, or you're looking for us to go do the scope, hire the consultant, get the work done, and then the results come back to you?
Well, which would you prefer? Do you need, I'll, right back at you, do, do you need to bring us the scope of services? Do you want us to approve the scope of services, or do you want to?
I want to do, I want to do whatever the council wants to do. Look, I, I want the council to feel comfortable about this process, this is about a process.
And I think you need to bring back the scope of services.
Okay.
Would you like to bring back scope of services first?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
And, and a process for selection of that, of that candidate?
All right, yeah, very good. Happy to do that, yep.
All right, we have?
And have the candidate, whoever it is, come and talk to us before we award the contract.
Well, that would be part, we'll, we'll have him make that part of that process.
That assumes we will award a contract.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But before that, you're gonna see the scope of services, and you'll see a process of how staff will look at hiring a consultant, whether we go out formally through like a CCNA, or a modified process.
Okay. Could we see a motion to that, fuck?
So moved.
Motion in a second? Yeah, that's good, I like that one. Any other discussion?
Final.
Yes?
That, East Terry Street can handle, I think it's up to 2,200 new dwellings, okay? And one of the concerns out there, I heard, one of the people are interested in building, was asking for 2,900.
Oh.
Okay, so, that's already over, and that doesn't count for anybody else who's out there who wants some, to do something or another.
Build a plant.
That's the, that's one of the problems. We will never have more mining there, who knows about farming, you probably doubt it, but I hope that we would take this opportunity, in your scope of services, to really look at the potential, this is our last shot at it, if we do anything in the DRGR, this will be our last shot to get Spring Creek right. It, it's not gonna happen, so, whether we do something, don't do something, it's up to the rest of council, I'll, I'll vote to go along with checking it out.
Okay, but, but again, we have a motion in a second to, to go ahead and get a scope of services back, and a plan for selecting, and again, council, don't take this lightly, this needs to be something that we work out, we work together, and, and depending on level, we need, we need to work something out here, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
And councilmember, really, I, I invite all of you to write me, if you've got thoughts about the scope of services, things like that, I mean, I, I want you to be bought into the selection process and this, and the scope of services, so, if you have ideas, please get them to us, we'd love to have them. Thank you.
And, and, and of course, Martha, you mentioned or, or not, if or not is, 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 is a remote possibility, we shouldn't do this, shouldn't do it, let them come in, let them come in and make the, the offer, and we'll just get one piece of property at a time, we'll go ahead and paste it together, or tell them no, because, because, I mean, this is, this is a question of coming up with, with parameters, and limits, and processes, where people, you know, minimum processes that people have to meet, I mean, so, so I think we, we, we need to do something, and it just, it's a matter of degree, but I think the or not, if, if, if you have a tendency to say or not, you should just say it.
Yeah, well, I leave my mind open, I, I, I could go, if Spring, if there are certain things that are gonna happen here, if certain things don't happen, then I won't vote for it, if certain things do, I could, so.
Call a question.
We have a question, we have a motion, thank you, sirs. We have a motion in a second, roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, what else you got for us, Carl?
Give me a second here, I need to get.
Actually, I think I've got the next item.
Oh, good, take it, thanks.
Shangri-La.
This is on Shangri-La Road, as you know, the Shangri-La Road Extension Project, we're just about finishing up the current phase, which is the drainage phase on either side of Old 41 Road, we're about to kick off the process to start the actual road extension project along Shangri-La Road out to Imperial, we wanted to use this opportunity just to bring two points back to council, to make sure that we're all heading in the right direction, and one is, just a summary with regard to financing, as I indicated in the summary green sheet, overall, the project is still well within budget estimates, we have probably spent a little more on planning and design than we originally anticipated, the land acquisition process is still going on, but we anticipate that we're gonna be within budget estimates there, and the actual construction, we're estimating to come in a little bit lower than we may have previously thought, so overall, the project is looking good in terms of financing. The second thing that we wanted to bring to your attention is that, based on all of the charrettes and workshops and planning discussions that we had, we have a concept in mind as to what that road is gonna look like, we've given you some renderings of what the finished product would look like, we've had discussions with the property owners along the route as we are going through the land acquisition process, and everyone seems to be comfortable with the finished product, including the sidewalks, bike paths, and the amenities, or lack of amenities that you might see on there, now, we just wanted to get to bring that to your attention in case there was any concerns about which way we're going, wanted to make sure we got that on the table before we finally do go out to bid after the first of the year. We're very comfortable with the design, Matt, as he was becoming more acclimated to the project, had some discussions with the design folks, because, as was indicated previously, we do have some concerns about the nature of the roadway, and whether or not it would be a speedway, they are, are, they being our consulting and design people, are pretty comfortable that that will not be the case, but we've already looked into the options of putting in some stop signs along the way, which would be basically a very quick fix way to address some of those issues. While I know there was some discussion based on Michael's presentation earlier about possibility of roundabouts, or those kind of features, I would caution council not to go down that path at this time, again, we have a design, we're gonna go ahead with it, with your approval, build it, if there are some issues afterwards, again, as Michael indicated, you don't design a solution until you know and can define what the problem is that you're trying to solve, so, I would say we, my recommendation, our recommendation would be that we go ahead with the project as designed, and see what the results are.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Three things, John, first of all, I don't agree with a design that doesn't have some safety measures at, at Windly Key and at Tropic Acre's intersection, it's too fast, I mean, we can put speed limits on there like we do on Imperial, and the people are gonna go right past them, and there's too many families trying to get in and out of there, not to have some, some sort of stop section, roundabout, I don't care what you do, but even it costs more to design, it's already over design budget, what, the second question was, what's, what's causing the design overrun?
The design overruns go back some number of years, but had basically to do with the increased focus on the drainage component, this is really a road project with a major drainage component in it, because it's handling not only the roadway drainage, but some of the other sheet flow drainage issues, and as that grew and evolved, the design was modified, we also had some modifications that came up as a result of the meetings with the neighborhoods and the property owners about what the ultimate design would look like, in terms of those amenities I mentioned, the bike paths and sidewalks, and each time that happened, there were more costs associated with it.
Okay, the last question's for the counselor, how many cases do we have going to judge on right away?
I'm going to guesstimate right now, but I want to say either five or six.
Out of 18 or 20?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Jen?
Thank you. Is this a time when we talk about buffering? Is that in the plan? You know, the city, we had put up a partial wall on the south side of Shangri-La, and when we first made that extension there to Old 41, and now, this is gonna add a lot more traffic onto the road, and there's houses there that are exposed, their backyard, so...
Buffering in terms of a wall feature is not part of the design, now, you have to remember that there is a wall on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that that kind of canyon effect with walls on both sides would be...
That's what I'm talking about, only the south side.
There's really not much more.
There's, there's, there's the wall that the city put up, I'm not talking about down that extension, I'm talking about the existing part of Shangri-La, there's about six homes that did not get the wall, the wall stopped.
On the existing part of Shangri-La?
Yes.
I'm sorry, again, we're, I was focused more on...
Right, but I'm saying, that's why I asked if it was appropriate to talk about it, because it is part of the whole overall project of that road becoming a thruway.
I frankly had not heard from any property owners that they're looking for a wall on the part of Shangri-La that's already built, but we can look into that.
Yes, please, as I have, and, and then there's, you've got like the, the backside to the trailer parks, you know, they're not abutting directly on it, but maybe we can look into vegetation or something, you know, this is what usual, you know, this, I'm the one, obviously, that brings this always up, because I've been on the receiving side of roadway expansion and how it affects your quality of life, so I just want to make sure that we don't have to do this after the road is done, and then they have the, the people come in and say, okay, there's now more traffic, and thank you very much.
Again, perhaps it's my misunderstanding, but that portion of the road you're talking about is already done, no? I mean, I'm...
But, but it isn't, yeah, thank you.
We'll certainly look into it.
Yeah, west, west does not, you're right.
Right, thank you.
Okay, yes, Steve?
John, do we have an estimated completion date now, with, with the delays and everything?
No, assuming we stay on this guideline, the timeline that we have now, we're hoping to have this done during the course of the next calendar year.
Good, thank you.
All right, council, were you looking for any?
Nope, just wanted to get direction, if there was any, other than what we've laid out.
Okay, yes, Pete?
I just have one comment, and, you know, for representing folks on the north side of Shangri-La there, I have not heard one person that does not want to move forward with this, but that doesn't mean that doesn't exist, I just...
No, I appreciate, I, I think that's consistent with our experience also.
What comment?
Yes?
Yeah, if we're putting any railing out there, you know, over, near culverts or whatever, in the future, when we're doing that, can we try to find something more attractive? Just, I know you need to have certain technical specifications for roadway safety, so in the ways that we can make it attractive, can we pay attention to that, 'cause, you know, sometimes we get hardware when we should have jewelry, thank you.
You mean like on the bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, and John, I, I mean, this probably isn't an appropriate time, but I'm gonna say it anyway.
Don't let that...
I, I think, I think that I, I, I kind of sensed from council that, that we are gonna be desirous of availing ourselves of that, of, of these crop circles, now, of, of this, this technology, and, and I think that it's really gonna work for Benny Springs, I think it's perfect for Benny Springs, so, I think that, you know, even though we need to go through this road process right now, so we can go ahead and get done with it, I think we need to be looking at, at doing an adaptation of that, as, as this growth avails, avails us of the ability to do so, because I think it's really gonna solve a lot of problems, it really works, I know there's a lot of people who don't think that it works, but it really does, it really does work, and it, and I think it saves you money in the long run, because it does allow you to move a lot of traffic at a nice slow pace through these intersections, probably more efficiently, so I think that, I think that whether it's, whether it's through one of our strategic planning processes, or how we get that across to where, whenever we hire somebody, that they know that that's how we want to solve these problems, somehow, we need to adopt the policy or something, that, that we, this is how we try it, okay? Anyway, that's it. You want to move to the next thing, Carl?
Yeah, actually, I'd like Matt to come up and...
Wait, for the next thing is...
Sorry.
Is my item, I'm sorry, we have a walk-on that was exactly after this item, and this is the binding authority resolution, this would give authority delegating to Dan Brundage and Ted Trica, Matt Feeney and John Gucciardi, the ability that during litigation, they can bind the city, it does help us in proceeding forward with the litigation.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Item out.
I'd like to, for Matt Feeney to come up and give you just a very, very brief status report on the Benita Trail project, as well as some of the changes in the dollars that we need you to be aware of and approve today. So, Matt, come on up.
All right, Matt, home run. Let's go.
Good afternoon, counsel and Mr. Mayor. Basically, we rebid the Benita Trail Phase One project. Previously, it was bid in June. We had two respondents, and there was a wide differential in the pricing, basically double. So we rebid it with several options and concluded and are making the recommendation to select alternate A and B, which are a kayak launch and an ADA ramp to get to the kayak launch, for a total of $260,371.34 to Bay Shore Construction Incorporated. To do so, we're asking that some funds be transferred, $25,000 from the Kent Road kayak project, kayak launch project, and $17,500 from park impact fees to be able to fund this. There is a 10% contingency because to award this, we have to move funds. So in the event that there would be any problems with the project, I'm asking for an additional 10%, which brings $286,260 to that capital improvement line item.
All right. Counsel, you want to do that authorization?
To be held...
Oh, to be held until the project's complete. In the event we don't spend it, it would go back to the unused park impact fees.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, counsel? Do you desire to do that, transferring the $25,000? I'll make a motion to do so. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
One of the, I'm sorry, could we have an update on where the trail is? I mean, what's, what's purchased, what's, what's ready, what's, when we think the project will be ready?
This project would be ready to go. It encompasses land that is already under city ownership, going basically from the south end of the Nature Place property where a parking area will be. It would be a walking trail down to the Imperial River, and then east-west along the river for some, how many feet? Ah, it's 2,050 feet.
Total?
Total, yes, sir. It basically comes down off Kent Road, where Kent Road Dog Legs to the west, and then it runs down to the river, goes to the east about 500 feet to the kayak launch, and then it, it runs to the west all the way to I-75. And then, just to put this into context, this again was envisioned as one piece of ultimately what could be a complete trail, or at least as complete as we could ever get it, along the, the river from east all the way back west.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Martha?
That was about four years ago, no, more than that, because Mr. Longkart wasn't on council yet. We had a zoning decision over at the, this is when you were running, actually, over at the corner of Benita Grand and Benita Beach Road, that in that zoning decision, Ben might remember, and I know the city attorney does, because there was a vote to reconsider and voted for zoning on that property with the inclusion of a kayak launch. Who knows when this will happen? Do you know what I mean? I mean, it could take 20 years. But I just want to be careful that when we're planning the kayak launches along the river, because we had another piece of property not too far from there on the east, was it east? No, west, at Miller Road or Boondock Road, where we had another kayak launch planned, and that kind of blew up. So just that, I, I would like to see if we have a map of where kayak launches are proposed along the river.
Part of this request is to eliminate one of those kayak launches that you pursued. I noticed that in the, in the record, you know, fortunately, I wasn't here four years ago, but it looked like you pursued many different options. This would be the final piece in that area, I believe, be the intent.
Well, the other one is a requirement of a zoning, so that will be built privately for public access. But you're saying at the end of Kent Road, can you tell me why the end of Kent Road, where we've been launching forever and ever and ever in a day, why that's not possible to put a kayak launch there?
I believe there's some ownership issues. It looked like you pursued the project and ran into some, some problems with property ownership. That's to the best of my knowledge.
Oh, there's like one ownership issue.
Well, regardless, regardless, we, they have a plan that they worked out, and it's been, the, the plan was, your, your plan was approved by council, wasn't it?
This, I believe, is all part of the Parks Master Plan.
They need a trail.
They need a trail. And what you're asking is to, to award this bid to the lowest bidder, right?
Yes, sir.
And to transfer some funds so you can get the job done, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I know you want to move along here, mayor. How far along does it, how far do you have to carry your kayak to get to the river from your park?
I'd have to run some numbers, councilwoman.
It, it's no, it's, it's not close.
Well, this is my concern. So, I mean, you know, our...
But we're, but we're, but we're in a position now, build it or don't build it and lose the grant money. What's your decision?
Well, we've done it, but how, how far do you have to carry your canoe to get to this place?
A long ways.
Lord.
But...
I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
You can have, you could put it on a, we can have kayak carts there. You can put on a kayak cart. It doesn't have to be...
We're not taking it over to like Mount Benita or anything, are we?
No, I think we can make it easier than that.
No. Okay.
But the situation we find ourselves in is that we, we have grant money, a considerable amount of grant money. We went a little over budget for that, but if, if we don't use this money for this, we lose it. Is that correct?
And this design, with the parking where it is, with the trail down to where the east-west trail would be, was approved by council before we submitted the grant application to the state. So we at least hoped that we were following council's lead on something that, that would be useful and productive.
Okay, good. I just said, I forgot about looking at specifically where it was. I'm sorry to take up your time. I know you all want this, and I want to have access on the river. I just hope we have access in the most appropriate places, that's all.
Yeah, and this is just a starting place. There, it will not be the last kayak launch ramp that we, or launch that we do on Imperial River, that's for sure.
Good.
I'm sure. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Okay, you have anything else for us, Carl?
That's it, mayor, thank you.
Oh, boy, Matt disappeared. I looked up and he was gone. Okay, council members and items, discussion recommendation for the Metropolitan, that one you can just kind of take your pen and just mark through, because that just got done. What happened was the Metropolitan Planning Organization took care of that for you. They nominated Steve and, and elected him Vice Chair. Steve, well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So I guess they thought, they said, well, that's, that's our decision to make. So I thought, oh, okay. So since there was two of us to pick from, anyway, then the resolution reappointing members to the Board for Land Use and Hearings. What do we got there?
I'd move to reappoint Brunswick and Norris.
We have a motion to reappoint Brunswick and Norris, and there's a second discussion.
Oh, boy, we're back to this again. Because I thought we had discussed it, discussed, or not discussed, what our policy was about reappointing, that each, on the zoning and the LPA, at least, or we had recommendations from council members from that district for reappointment to suggest to you, mayor, and then vote on as council. Susan Healy also is not interested in being reappointed.
I didn't, I didn't motion for her.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's just talking.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, I'm just saying, she's talking.
Okay, but Wes Norris was a District Four appointment at that time. It wasn't a District One appointment. Don't know if that matters to y'all, but when we're calculating how, who's an appointment and not an appointment, to say he's District Five, he currently lives in District Five. But he was Four, and then we had the same problem on the next one. So, thank you. I, I would recommend for District Five, Richard Donnelly.
Okay.
I'll second.
Wait a minute, whoa.
We got one motion already.
So, so you, you have right now for the zoning board, all right?
Who do you want for zoning board?
Explain it to us.
Brunswick and what?
There are currently three vacancies. Roger Brunswick, Wes Norris, and Susan Healy is not interested in being reappointed. Roger Brunswick and Wes are interested. The only applications that we've received are the ones that are listed here. We don't have any for District Two. We don't have any that are interested in District Five.
So, so...
Well, with the exception of Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Donnelly is, he's, he's District Five.
Hold on, yeah. All right, so, so you have three positions to fill.
Three positions to fill.
Three positions to fill, and you have two, we'll call them incumbents, or two, two people right now. Brunswick and...
And Norris.
And Norris that are existing, who that motion has been made on, to, to fill the seats that they're in right now. Correct.
So, counsel, let's, we'll discuss that first, and then we'll go to the, the other seat.
I was just going to say, I think we should move forward with all the names here of people that have expressed interest, but my understanding is we want to fill up those two spots, and then with these remaining names, fill up the last spot. Is that correct?
My, my motion is to reappoint the two, Norris and Brunswick, who want to retain their position on the advisory board, they're incumbents.
And then we'll talk about vacancy.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, and, and if there, is there any other discussion?
Well, and my point was that we, I don't know that we've changed the policy, even though they want to be reappointed. Those appointments are up to council members, and that the council member who appointed Mr. Norris, I believe, was the former council member in District Four. So it should have been asked of council member from District Four if he would like to recommend Mr. Norris, or does he have another recommendation?
Well, actually, to correct you...
Did we change that?
I call the question.
No. I'm sorry, I, I, thank you. I, I wanted to explain that actually that was originally what happened, but the last time around, because of the way that Wesley was removed last time, council collectively reinstated him or put him back into office, the entire council does. It was a council decision to do that. So it wasn't, it wasn't a selection from, from that person from that district, so...
I'm just confused about that, mayor. I'm sorry.
That's all right. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, we have an open position. What's, counsel, what's your thoughts on that?
I'd like to recommend Richard Donnelly.
Second.
Richard Donnelly?
Mm-hmm.
I second.
Richard Donnelly, and there's a second. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to recommend all the people here that have expressed interest and that we vote.
There's one position open.
There's one...
I understand.
We can vote.
She wants to rank them. Oh. Okay, so we don't do the council recommend anymore?
The ranking sheet. Well, there is a ranking sheet attached to the green sheet if you'd like to proceed that way.
Fill out your name on it, so, because no secret voting is permitted.
Do you want it sent electronically, because I don't have a paper?
I'll give you one.
Okay. You, you have, excuse me.
Would you like to do that?
Do you have, you have that? I don't have that.
I'll make seven copies.
We still have the motion, though, right?
Can we just call a vote on the motion?
Yeah, call a vote.
Call a vote on the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Call a vote. I just wasn't sure.
Okay, hold on.
I wasn't sure we made...
We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? And it's, what's the gentleman's name again?
Richard Donnelly.
Richard Donnelly. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart? Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
That worked.
Okay, as usual, that went quite badly. Why, we try and try, but we just never do. I...
Well, you recall, yeah, back in early November, I sent you all an email alerting you that these seats were coming available and to maybe, you know, solicit interest from your districts, but I didn't hear anything back. So we just used the pool of applicants that we've received over the years, so, and they've all been contacted, and they indicated their interest.
Okay, all right, all right. But, but, okay, anyway, there, let's just move along. It's not going to get any better, yeah.
That's certainly nothing against Mr. Donnelly. I just, I would have liked to see it the other way, that's all.
I got you.
That we vote on it.
I don't want to get in discussion, but I don't know that we've changed our policies.
Okay, and here we go. Item, let's see, what do we got? Oh, oh, here we go. Item C. And we got local planning members. We got this to do again. Okay, what have you got open there? Diane, go ahead and preface this for us.
Currently, we have two vacancies, Henry Byrd and Sam Vincent. They're both in District Four. They're both interested in being reappointed. I'll make a motion to reappoint.
They're in District Five.
We, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and reappoint the people who are currently sitting on the seat. Is there any discussion?
They are in District Five.
I believe...
Sam's in Brendan Cove, it's in Five.
Sam Vincent, you appointed for your District Five appointment, even though he lives in District Four?
We, we re...
Oh, okay, so he is now in Five?
Yep. Both in Five.
Yeah, yeah.
No, just because they live in Five doesn't mean they're appointed by Five, but Sam was... Moving along.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
All right. Okay, yeah, and just because we, we changed the district out, we pull a district out from underneath them, it doesn't change who they are, so...
Right, exactly.
Okay, hopefully it doesn't. I don't think, anyway. Okay, carrying on here before we lose everybody. We have item D. Resolution of the City of Benita Springs.
That's mine. Thank you very much. The same thing. We have four wonderful members of our Art and Public Places Board, which are, all four are interested in continuing their terms as much as I am. We really appreciate Cynthia Williams asking to become on board. We welcome her to all of the meetings, and I would like to ask you all to reappoint the four members looking to stay on the Art and Public Places Board.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion. Thank you.
A motion and a second by Councilwoman Simons?
That's good, you got it.
No, no, a motion by her, Simons. Anyway, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilmember Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, item E.
The same thing with the Tree Advisory Board, and all three members would like to retain their seats, so I'll make the motion that we reappoint.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. What's their names, please?
We have Ms. Suzie Valentine, Mr. Paul Kleins, and Thomas Hecker.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, Jen, do you have anything else for us briefly before we get going?
Two things really fast. I'm sorry, last night I had the opportunity to attend an Eagle Scout Court of Order Award on, for Mr. Timothy Schmidt, who is a member of Benita Springs Boy Scout Troop 109. Senator Garrett Richter was there, and I just want to say congratulations to Timothy Schmidt for obtaining that really tremendous honor, and congratulations to his family, because it's a, it's a family affair when something like that happens. So it was very exciting to be part of that. I just want to say that also, this is the time to be making all of our wonderful New Year's resolutions, so don't forget that we have a wonderful rec center that could help you make some of those things happen. And we've got great, great, brand-new programs starting in January. And that is it for me, and I just want to wish everyone a safe and wonderful holiday time.
Councilwoman Slackta, thank you, Jen.
Yes, mayor, at the last Veterans Advisory Committee, the committee voted to contribute $500 from their fund to the City of Benita Springs for the special events that we have. I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and from Jerry, George, Ellen, and Kramer, happy Festivus.
All right.
Ha, that's it. Okay, good. Peter, what do you have for us, sir?
Yeah, I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Schmidt from last night. I was unable to attend, but sent him a letter. I know that was, you know, wonderful. I spoke to some other scout leadership about that, and that's quite an accomplishment, absolutely, which I did not fully realize, but fantastic. Also want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and I just wanted to clarify something earlier about these doggies that are coming to town. I just, I, I'm all for them coming. I just would have liked to have seen it another way that we could probably look at raising more money privately and less money publicly, almost zero money publicly, but thank you.
We all have to agree, it would have been a good thing. Go ahead, Martha.
I think the dogs are fantastic. Thank you, councilwoman and the Art and Public Places Board for having those dogs come to town.
Are they going to be in cages?
Go ahead, Martha.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Martha.
I want to correct something that was mentioned in public comment earlier about Tisha's laundry. At the cost to neither the city or the county, but at the cost to the owner, that site was cleaned up in 2007. I called EPA. They had money in a trust fund. They took out 800 tons of non-toxic material and 300 tons of toxic material. It's cleaned, it's done, because we were talking about doing the roadway, and I talked to the people over there, and they said, well, we won't have parking, don't do that to us, taken care of, so we don't have to worry about that. Second, I'm having scouts coming over to City Hall tomorrow, not Friday, with scoutmaster Alan Backus, his son, and scout, Ruskouski will be coming to finish their citizenship in the community merit badge, and hopefully I can get time with the city manager, because we had arranged our schedule. I want to thank the city clerk for giving me some good information I can give to the scouts, but I love scouting, and however we can support the scouts, I'm all for that. I did have an opportunity to meet the secretary from DOT at the RPC, and just briefly mentioned our DOT pond on Arroyo, and he wants to know the information so that they can maybe clean it up, because I've talked to Phil Flood about that, and they're like, oh, yeah, you can take the reeds out, that's fine. Won't take away from Johnny Limbo's local money. It's a whole different set of monies that they might help us with, so that would be really great. And then last, mayor, I want to thank you for the roundabout discussion this morning. It's really exciting to me, because I know there's some fear about, and I want to congratulate you for getting that PDNE design passed by MPO, but I hope that the MPO will consider a roundabout at Benita Beach Road and 41, because I think it'd be a real statement about our city, you know? And it would be innovative, and we'll be real lookers, so. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Festivus to your people there. Happy Hanukkah to a lot of our people here. And let's remember, be kind to the children. Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Ben. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very healthy and prosperous new year, especially to my colleagues here and the staff, and you all have a wonderful time. It's a great time of year.
Good deal. Councilman McIntosh?
Thank you. This is a more somber note, and I know it's late, but I'm going to ask the council to help me here. With the tragedy in Newtown, I started looking at security of our own schools. And in Lee County, we have an armed deputy in each high school and each middle school. We have no kind of protection at our elementary schools. And some of the, some of the middle schools, all the middle schools, double to go to the elementary schools, which makes some sense when you've got an elementary school and a middle school next to each other. Our middle school and our two elementaries, three elementary schools are far separate. I think it's, I think we're probably never going to have that issue, but I wouldn't want to challenge that issue. I'd like the city, through the mayor and the city manager, to write a letter to Superintendent Burke, asking him to place armed deputies in our elementary schools. It's an expense, I recognize that. I spoke with Major Rairden, Captain Smith of the SRO, Student Resource Organization, yesterday, along with Captain Hinkson here. They all supported. I spoke with each of the elementary school principals. They would absolutely love to have an armed guard in their schools. So, if I can ask the council for an agreement, I would like to have the city send a letter to Superintendent Burke.
Good, good. Counsel, you got any problem with that?
I have no problem with that, as long, they're like the resource officer.
They are.
That's what they'll be. And I also would hope that this council would send a note to our representatives also about guns in schools. We don't want to pass a law to allow people carrying guns in schools, please. We're going into parks with guns. I mean, I think it's a problem, as we see, so.
For right now, because.
It's a debate, but.
Yeah, it's a debate, all right. But, yeah, it would be my pleasure to sign that letter, if you would write that up.
Thank you, and on a cheerier note to each of you in this room and across the city, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Had a pretty eventful week there, starting with the MPO. We did, finally, we got the PDNE study advanced four years, which was a pretty good trick. And they are committed to working with the city and doing this in a manner that doesn't presuppose what the conclusion will be. They really want to work with us on that, and I think that we'll come up with something really good. This is really important, so that was quite a good deal. We had a meeting with Senator Richter, Representative Pasadomo, about the gambling issue and some other things. I think it was a really productive thing. Thank you, Carl and Carol, for that. And we're supposed to meet with Rodriguez as well. That seems to be going as well as can be expected. And it was, it was, it was a great pleasure to be nominated to be chairman of the Crew Trust as something that was, been close to my heart for the last 20 years or so. After all, that's where I found my wife, so I figure that's where I probably ought to invest my other time in there, so. It is a 60,000-acre piece of property that's just happened, so it's a pleasure.
How much are you getting paid for that?
Nothing.
Right.
So, anyway, there we have it. And anything else, would you like to prove the minutes?
Prove them.
We have a motion and a second, prove the minutes. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longkart?
Hi.
Councilman McIntosh?
Hi.
Councilwoman Martin?
Hi.
Councilman Slackta?
Hi.
Mayor Nelson?
Hi.
Councilman Simmons?
Hi.
Councilwoman Simons?
Hi.
And look at us, we're up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
Hi, Deb McLean with the Banana Appeal. I found this meeting very, very interesting with regard to economic development. The gentleman who gave us the roundabout presentation actually solved issues so that we would maintain our small city, small charm, warm heart concept